City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Yes. Alderman Fleming?
Present.
Alderman Fisk?
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Here.
Alderman, uh, Wynn?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Here.
Alderman Suffertin?
Here.
Alderman Revell?
Here.
We have a call.
What about me?
I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey as well.
Here.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, City Clerk, and welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, March 26, 2020, special City Council meeting. We have all, uh, the City Council members with us today. Uh, as you can tell, uh, we are, uh, all remote into this meeting because of the COVID-19, uh, emergency that's ongoing and the need for us all to practice strict social distancing.
Mayor?
Yes?
We'll need a motion, right, to, uh, suspend the rules to conduct this remote meeting, so I'd like to move that we suspend the rules to conduct the meeting by, uh, remote teleconference.
That kind of...
Get in.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Kelly, that work?
It works.
I didn't need to do a roll call, okay.
The grade.
Well, wel- well, welcome, everybody. Um, before, uh, before we get into, uh, some of the items, just for mayor announcements and proclamations, I don't have any of those this evening, but I did want to give the community an update on the COVID-19, uh, thing in Evanston. Since the last time we met, uh, which was on March 17th, so nine days ago, uh, we have seen the number of confirmed cases in Evanston rise close to 1,000% from 6 to 55, which is the number we have today. Sadly, we lost a resident living in one of our senior living centers, uh, to the COVID-19 disease last weekend. Uh, we lost another community member who regularly attends church here in Evanston, uh, but living in nearby suburb. Um, so this is really hitting home and, uh, affecting our community. We are under a stay-at-home order imposed by the governor last weekend, uh, and we have seen a rise in proven security here in Evanston. On the upside, I've also witnessed, and I know other people have witnessed, uh, neighbors, community partners, our elected officials and the city staff come together to develop a whole community response to this emergency. Tonight, I want to share with you a few messages that I hope will leave you with the same, with a sense of urgency and hope and purpose. Uh, message number one, I want everybody that's watching this to know that the city has one priority, one priority only right now, and that's eliminating and reducing the immediate threat to health, life, and safety posed by COVID-19. Message number two, we are all in this together. It's not often that we're all called upon to help one another, yet that is where we find ourselves at this moment. Will we rise to the occasion or make a lighthearted attempt and let the virus continue to grow exponentially? That is the question we all must answer together. The governor's stay-at-home order is a must-do, it's not a nice-to-do. I can't stress enough that we all don't, that if we all don't comply and do our part, then we won't slow the spread, and the hospitals and healthcare professionals will have to answer questions like, how early is too early to discharge a patient? Who gets a better respirator when there aren't enough of either? I don't want to put our doctors, and I know people in this community don't want to put our medical professionals in that position. We have an opportunity to alter the course of this virus if we make a furious effort to practice strict social distancing. Be warned, if non-compliance of the governor's order consistently occurs in Evanston, and frustratingly, there are some not complying, then the city will take further actions to enforce strict social distancing. Message number three, we can support, we can best support our courageous healthcare workers, emergency responders, congregate home staff, childcare workers, pharmacists, and all those caring for the sick or supporting those caring for the sick by following the governor's stay-at-home order. We owe them, and all who continue to do essential work to meet our needs during this crisis, keeping grocery stores and carryout restaurants open and providing essential services, a great deal of gratitude for not being their post when we need them most. Don't think what is happening elsewhere can't happen in Evanston. The exponential growth of COVID-19 can happen here. The virus naturally wants to jump from one human to another. In general, the virus is doubling throughout the United States every two to three days. We now have more cases in the United, confirmed cases in the United States than elsewhere in the world. While we don't know how many people actually have the disease, we can't assume there is widespread, uh, it's widespread in our community. We also know that until efforts to flatten the curve take hold, the number of confirmed cases will continue to grow significantly. Message four, create a family COVID-19 plan. There's a great adage, fail the plan, plan to fail. We should all take that to heart when it comes to COVID-19. Organizations around this city, particularly our congregate housing, housing centers, are being asked to thoroughly plan on how they will handle a resident who develops COVID-19 and shelter them in place while protecting others at the facility. This can be done safely, according to public health officials, but needs to be done thoughtfully and following all public health guidelines. The same can be said of each of us. What will you do if someone in your family gets COVID-19? What's your backup plan if you can't self-isolate at home? What about your older parents? If one of them gets COVID-19, how should they be cared for? In their current housing unit or someplace else? Please consult CDC and Illinois Department of Public Health for help developing your family plan. There's tons of resources out there on those websites about how to do that. Message five, I want you to know that the city is closely monitoring nearby hospital capacity and personal protective equipment. Currently, our hospitals, uh, Amida St. Francis, North Shore Evanston, uh, and North Shore Skokie continue to have capacity. This is due in part to their decision to shut down all elective surgeries and retrofit some of their medical areas to serve COVID-19 patients. The city is working with the hospitals and IDPH on a daily basis to monitor capacity and discuss contingency plans if the system reaches total capacity. The COVID-19 logistics manager, Sean Cholick, and his team are closely monitoring and managing the city's inventory of PPEs, of their equipment, materials, and resources that may be necessary. The operations team under Public Health Manager Greg Olson is working closely with our congregate housing centers to understand their needs around the area of PPEs. Our planning team, under EFD Division Chief Kimberly Call, is regularly collecting information from local, county, state, and federal resources to identify both current and future needs related to hospital capacity, rate of spread, mortality rates, and current and future community needs. Tonight, the interim city manager and her team will present the COVID-19 emergency response framework in place for this disaster. That's number, item number two on our agenda. Last, there is some good news for us in Evanston. We have a world-class health organizations in Evanston that not only save lives, but some of, but have some of the finest minds in healthcare. They are working around the clock to treat patients and prepare for potential influx. There is a capacity currently in both hospitals, as I indicated earlier. Doctors and academics in Evanston and across the country are racing to develop a cure, antiviral medications, and new ways to treat the disease, but we need to buy them more time. That's why it's so important that we all comply with the orders of the governor. The social fabric of our community is strong, increasing my confidence that we will do what is necessary to comply with the governor's stay-at-home order while organizing to help those in our community, most severely impacted by the closure of most businesses and services. Our city staff, both elected and professional, are working 24/7 to create an agile organization that can rapidly and intelligently respond to this growing crisis. This past week, they've been hard at work with community and business partners to develop and implement plans to better shelter our homeless, care for residents who need assistance self-isolating, and help our congregate living facilities prepare for residents with COVID-19. And lastly, our residents are stepping up to help the most vulnerable in our community: buying meals, delivering groceries, finding housing solutions, providing childcare, and telecommunication. As we all know, the burdens of this emergency extend far beyond the physical health of each of us. While no per, no one person or no one organization is unaffected by this crisis, the impacts are unequal. We know our low-income residents are hurting, our small businesses are struggling, our houses of worship are suffering, our mental health is being challenged, our teachers and kids are learning how to heal and go on. If you fall into any one of these categories, I want you to know you have advocates among your elected officials, among the nonprofits in this community, among your schools, and among your neighbors. Our federal, state, and county partners, including our elected leaders, are working hard to advocate for us in Washington and Springfield, proposing aid to help our families and small businesses. It won't make any of us whole again, but it will make this painful experience a little more bearable. In closing, it's not often that an entire country, state, or community is called upon to work hand-in-hand to help itself. Today, we are called upon to do that. I'm confident that we heed the governor's stay-at-home order and give others in our community practical and emotional support who will look back upon this moment in our lives grateful for what we all did on this threat. With that, I'd like to, uh, turn to, uh, I don't think the city manager has any announcements, but, uh, Erica, do you have anything?
No announcements, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, and as I mentioned earlier, the city staff's going to be giving a presentation on the, uh, response framework. Uh, City Clerk, the communications?
Yeah, uh, do you have a few, uh, public, uh, this public comment that were received, with the council, how would the council like to proceed with this? Should I read them into the record or?
So you know what? Uh, what we'll do, uh, Mr. Clerk, is today, we're going to go through special orders of business and then do public comment, so when we get to that, I'll turn back to you for, uh, you to, uh, you know, summarize or read into the record those, those comments.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any other items with the recent election or anything?
Uh, we will present that, uh, at a later date when I think we can figure out how to actually present it, uh, with city staff, so.
Very, very, very good. All right, thank, thank you. Uh, we're now going to move to, uh, special orders of business. We have two items on the agenda today. Uh, one is for act, action, and the other is, um, uh, for discussion. It's a presentation by the staff and then discussion amongst the council. Uh, so Alderman Rainey, would you, uh, move SP1?
Um, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, good. Um, SP1 is, um, Resolution 29R20 extending the declared state of emergency to April 13. On, um, March 15th, you declared a state of emergency. Section 11 of the Illinois Emergency Management Act provides that the mayor's declaration will only last seven days without city council consent. Given the fact that there's no immediate end to the, uh, COVID-19 outbreak in sight, staff recommends that the city adopt Resolution 29R20 to extend the current state of emergency to April 13, the date of the next scheduled city council meeting. I therefore move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? And why don't we, why don't we do this for discussion since this is a whole new system? If you've got something, just put your finger up and I'll, I'll call on you. All right, see, seeing no discussion, uh, City Clerk, could you take? All right, Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, so I have a question. This was part of the question that I was trying to ask at our last meeting, and I think that then I went offline and spoke to Corporation Counsel, and there were some varying opinions on this. So, Corporation Counsel, it is now your understanding that we need to renew this every seven days based on the state code? Because you said that the state code, I believe you said the state code conflicted with Illinois Municipal Code, is that correct?
That's correct, but we don't need to re, to renew this every seven days. If this resolution is passed, it would go until April 13th, 2020.
So can you just explain to me then, so, we have our own city code, and obviously there's state law, and then there's the code. So right now, if we do this until the 13th, and if we then don't have a regular meeting on the 13th, because we're still in the same type of pandemic, and we have to either meet virtually or we don't meet, we would have to come on, have a meeting to renew it again until whatever time we set? It can go past seven days?
I wish I had a really definitive answer for you. Here's the answer. The Illinois Municipal Code conflicts with this Illinois Emergency Act. The Illinois Municipal Code states that the state of emergency for a municipality ends at the next regular city council meeting. Since regular city council meetings are probably not going to happen for the foreseeable future because of COVID-19, um, there's no telling when the next city council meeting would be, we would hope, in April. Uh, to that end, the Illinois Emergency Act states that it ends, um, within seven days. So I found there was a conflict between the two statutes, and our local ordinance was not helpful on that point. So in an abundance of caution, since the special meeting was called, the resolution was drafted.
Okay, so then it's your opinion, I know you and I talked about this, but just for public knowledge, that our code, so we have three, we have three different things that conflict, as you just said, so we need to update our code, which I hope is on the agenda for us to do at the next Rules Committee or at least City Council. Um, ideally, we won't have another emergency, but definitely we need to have that. And then can you continue to work with, um, Heather Brad or whoever at the Municipal League and then the state to make sure that our code is matching what is accurate?
Our, our code does not conflict. Our code doesn't speak to how long it lasts. The, because it doesn't speak to that, I went to the Illinois Municipal Code, which stated that it ends at the next regular city council meeting, but it was also brought to my attention, there's this other emergency act that was enacted that states it lasts for seven days. So, um, our, the Evanston Municipal Code is silent as to how long a state of emergency lasts.
Okay, so I would at least like, since we have jurisdiction over that, to make sure our code is updated when we have time to have a longer conversation about this and we're not under emergency, and we can put some more parameters into our own code, so obviously, next time, if we're not able to meet, we have clarity on what we're doing.
Okay. All right, any, any other discussion? Alderman Suffertin, you got your hand up?
Yeah, um, Kelly, Erica, or, uh, Mr. Mayor, can you explain the difference between how we operate regularly and how we're operating under this, uh, emergency declaration?
I can take a stab at that, I'm not, um, I'm not going to opine on the legal portion of it, but, um, we're operating the same today as we were, um, before the emergency was declared, except for that, uh, the city is operating under the structure of the Incident Command System, and that is what we're going to go into detail about when I do the presentation at the next item on the agenda.
Thank, thank you, Erica. Kelly, can you help me understand the legal effects of operating under an emergency declaration as opposed to just our standard, uh, former government?
Sure, there's two things to note. One, um, the Illinois Municipal Code states that in a declaration of emergency for a municipality, the mayor has extraordinary authority. Um, what that extraordinary authority is, isn't exactly defined in the Illinois Municipal Code. However, Title IX of the Evanston Municipal Code outlines that in a state of emergency that enacts the EOC, or Emergency Operations Center. Um, at this time, it's my understanding that there has been an emergency, uh, manager appointed, and the city is operating, um, according to a chain of command pursuant to that ordinance, which would allow effective communication and emergency measures to be, um, enacted pursuant to the ordinance.
Thanks, and then, I guess, Mr. Mayor, can you explain how you anticipate utilizing this tool between now and the 13th, uh, that running our government under a standard form, uh, would make it more difficult?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, uh, it's a couple of things. One, I think we want to have a state, a local state of emergency in terms of just demonstrating later on for all the federal aid that's coming down, that we recognize it as an emergency here in the community. Uh, secondly, if there are, um, situations that we just find untenable, that people aren't, um, you know, complying with the governor's orders, and we want to take action to, uh, you know, instantly address that, um, that can be done under this emergency declaration.
If I may chime in, um, also, everyone should keep in mind that the governor's, um, stay-at-home order, within that order and within state law, are provisions for local municipalities to enact, um, penalties pursuant to state law for anyone not complying with the governor's order. So that's by state law, and municipalities may enact those measures.
Thank you.
Alderman, um, Wilson, did you have something? I saw your light on a second ago.
Mine?
Yeah.
Uh, if it was, it was a mistake, sorry.
Alderman Revell?
Um, so?
Oh, you didn't? Okay. Any other discussion? Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Um, I don't know why we can't confirm that we're going to have a meeting in April. I mean, I, I would like to, uh, you know, when the time is appropriate, to move that we do have a meeting in April.
I think that we have, so have in April, and the, I suggested it's our standard meeting of April 13th, that is why this resolution goes until the 13th. There are a lot of pertinent business items that the council needs to address, and so I intend to have a full, uh, legislative agenda on 4th, April 13th. So that will be our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I mean, the reason I said that is because I heard comments that implied that we might not do that, so I, I appreciate that. I, I think we definitely ought to confirm that that's going to happen. Regardless of the format.
I, I, I agree as well, that we should have the meeting on April 13th.
I have one more quick question.
Alderman?
And if, and maybe this is for Erica's presentation, um, Erica, will you go into, um, Corporation Counsel talked about our city code, so, I think it's Chapter IX, Title IX, or something like that, where the Office of Emergency Preparedness, will you go into that? Is that your presentation that you're going to speak of?
Yes.
Okay, and so then my only other comment is, um, if, um, Corporation Counsel, when we update our code, if we can also look at that section, I know you and I spoke about that, so while that's in the code, obviously, we don't have many emergencies of this magnitude when we're operating under a different kind of emergency management team, um, but that, in my opinion, would be something that we want to have flushed out and it's clear, so that, I mean, part of the reason I wanted to have this meeting, there was a lack of clarity on my part, was, was how we're operating, who's making decisions, and so I, I'd like for that to just be a little bit more flushed out for whatever council comes behind us that might have an emergency, that it's very clear, once we have this declaration, what happens after that.
All right, we'll do that.
Any, any other discussion? All right, so we had a motion to move it and a second. Uh, City Clerk, could you please take the roll on, uh, SP1, Resolution 29-R20 extending the declared state of the emergency to April 13, 2020?
Yes. Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn? Alderman? Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Clerk Reed? Were you able to hear me?
I can hear you.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
And I vote aye.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Clerk. All right, SP1, Resolution 29-R20 passes the Evanston City Council on the 9 to 0 row. We're now going to move to item number two, uh, which is, uh, on COVID-19 state of emergency, uh, and this is a discussion on the preparation, planning issues regarding the current state of emergency, uh, here in Evanston, and in the state, and across the country. Uh, so with that, I'd like to turn it over to the city manager and her team, uh, to give us a, uh, briefing on that, and then we'll open an opposite discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to, uh, share a presentation right now, and Chief Scott is going to start us off, so if I do this correctly, uh, you'll see it in a minute. All right, Chief Scott, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, and can you see the presentation?
Yes.
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 Um, Mayor Hagerty, members of the city council, City Clerk Reed, City Manager Starley, uh, Fire Chief Brian Scott, and I'd like to start off today when we talk about the overall, uh, COVID-19 response at the city, uh, to give you a kind of a quick primer on how we're organizing and structuring, uh, the city's COVID-19 response, and maybe we're sure you're in the public, uh, this framework that we're applying through this crisis really is the most effective way to manage an incident of this complexity. Uh, we have enacted and opened our Emergency Operations Center on March 18th, and we've had a very forward-leading operational and planning posture for the last eight days. Um, when we talk about priorities for the city, um, where we try to define the intent of the city leadership in very general terms about what's most important to us, and obviously, that's going to be life, safety, and incident stabilization. So you can see here that we have two very important priorities reflected in terms of dealing with that immediate threat, the health, life, and safety, as well as trying to follow all the guidance provided by our public health authorities, including the CDC, the IDPH, and our own Health Department. Uh, next slide, please. These priorities help us kind of define our objectives for our response, basically, um...
Are you talking?
Chief Scott, I think we lost you. I think he may have hit a button and disconnected himself. Hopefully, he will figure it out and dial back in, but while he is doing that, I will take over for him for the moment, and if he gets back on, let me know, and I'll hand it back to him. Okay, so what Chief Scott was going to say was that we are now operating under the NIM system, or the National Incident Management System. This is a system that ensures that we have a flow of decision-making and a span of control that can easily be understood by members of the team, and we can share, uh, the priorities and then help develop the tasks amongst the team. So this, uh, is really effective in handling a lot of large-scale emergencies such as this one, and we are not alone in implementing this. This is being done in cities and states nationwide at the moment. So this is our organizational chart. This chart can change, um, on a day-to-day basis, because these charts are developed for every single operational period, and usually, the operational periods can range from 24 to 48 hours, or 72 hours, depending on the situation.
I'm back.
Okay, go ahead, Chief, I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, I'm not sure, you guys, I apologize for the technical difficulty to begin with.
I just covered the last slide, so you're starting off on the organization chart.
Okay, great. Um, so if you guys look at this overall, um, organizational chart, this kind of reflects how we are managing the crisis through the Incident Command System. So you'll see at the very top, the Unified Command is where it all starts, where those priorities are established, and then those priorities are then, uh, broken up into objectives, strategies, strategies and tactics by people further down in that organizational chart. The key folks to kind of concentrate in terms of getting that work done are our section chiefs, and you'll see them kind of midway through the chart. Uh, we have an operations section chief that deals with kind of getting the work done on a tactical level, and you want someone that has, um, a high degree of expertise in a particular crisis that you're dealing with, and that's why you see Greg Olson in that particular position. As you move over to the right, you'll see we have a planning section chief, logistics section chief, and finance section chief, each particular section having a particular and important role in mitigating the crisis. Plans does a lot with the terms of kind of forecasting, data analysis, and, uh, kind of compiling all the, uh, the stats and data and the plan itself as we move forward. Logistics, as you might imagine, is critical in getting the resources, equipment, and people we need to manage the incident, and finance and administration is really critically important in terms of making sure that we, um, are compliant with, uh, federal guidelines for future reimbursement, that we're tracking costs correctly, that we're getting contracts done the right way, and, uh, should capturing all the costs involved in managing the COVID-19 response. Um, next slide, please. Um, next slide, please. So again, when we talk about the Incident Action Planning Process, that is a five-stage process that happens each, each operational period at the, uh, EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. So basically, a planning process involves us trying to gain a new understanding of the situation through situational awareness from each operational period. From that Unified Command Group develops either new or revised or reprioritized incident objectives, and that is then kind of pushed down further into the organization where the section chiefs develop new tactics and strategies to achieve those objectives. Our planning group then develops a whole new incident action plan for the next operational period so that we can evaluate, revise, and then execute that plan. Overall, what I want to express is that this whole planning process is completely designed and geared towards giving those out in the field that are managing the crisis the direction, organization, and resources to accomplish the mission. So currently, these are gonna be the objectives, um, that we've established within our Incident Action Plan, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about these as we go through them. And please kind of take note that, uh, they are placed in the priority that Unified Command Group has established.
Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
Brian, it's Ann. Can, can the public see these? I know you said that they can't see the gallery, but can they see these, um, slides?
I believe they can. This is a presentation, I think, being shared to everyone. Is that correct, Erica?
Yes. So when these slides are up, the public and the council is seeing the slides. When the slides are down, the public is seeing the gallery view or the same view that everybody else is seeing of everybody on the screen.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you.
Sure.
So our first objective is to assist long-term care facilities and other organizations, including, as the mayor mentioned earlier, um, congregate facilities, to make sure that we're serving the most vulnerable and at-risk populations with respect to the COVID-19 crisis. Second, we want to develop and implement housing and transportation services, uh, for those in need of self-isolation. And what we mean by that is, you know, those individuals that may not have the ability to go to their home or have a home, uh, to be properly self-isolated during this. Number three, to coordinate with the area hospitals to expand their capacity and services. And there's been a lot of proactive outreach with our local hospitals to make sure that we're coordinating that in the most effective way possible because we obviously believe capacity is gonna be or could be an issue, um, as the COVID-19 crisis expands over time. Number four, we want to maintain the supply chain of personal protective equipment or PPE with a special priority placed upon healthcare, first responders, and those that we have in self-isolation. Number five, we want to protect our city staff and residents by providing timely, specific, and consistent COVID-19 information from as many sources as possible. Next slide, please. Number six, we'd like to track the spread of COVID-19 and identify those at risk in Evanston in order to slow the spread of the virus, and as well as, uh, try to implement proactive strategies to mitigate the crisis. Number seven, develop a volunteer management plan to better manage COVID-19 response and recovery. Number eight, understand and address food accessibility, excuse me, and insecurity by collaborating with community partners. And finally, number nine, formulate a data analytics group to better identify future projections of incident needs. And obviously, that also might tie into our sixth objective, but we'll have a team of folks out of our planning section just dedicated to that ninth objective. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, these section chiefs are really critical and serve an important leadership role to, to folks downstream in the organization, whether they be branch leaders or group leaders with specific tactical work assignments. But basically, the section leaders have, uh, the responsibilities as follows. The operations chief is responsible for managing, um, the public health group of COVID-19, and again, helping to develop the strategies and tactics within his particular branches and groups to, to manage the crisis the most, in the most direct way. Um, logistics is gonna be responsible for giving him the resources he needs to do that, and that includes obtaining PPE, equipment, another resource that we may need. Planning is, is important because of its, uh, focus on situational awareness and data analysis, and of course, they play a critical role in that five-step planning process I talked about that continually develops our, our newest and, and, I guess you could say, um, most direct incident action plan as we get new information and situational awareness from each operational period. And then finally, the finance section chief has a role in funding the operation, monitoring our expenses, and making sure that with our contracts procurement, that we're following all federal guidelines so we, we can secure, uh, the most reimbursement possible from the Stafford Act. So this concludes kind of my section of the presentation. Um, does anyone have any questions on this piece before I hand it off?
Doesn't sound like there's any questions at this point, so I'm going to...
You know, I, I just have to, a quick question. Chief Scott, the org chart or the flow chart that you showed when you jumped back on the line?
Yes, sir.
Is that being posted anywhere on our website?
Um, no. Um, generally, an incident action plan is something that's kept within the crisis management team, and the crisis management team are specially trained folks, um, in a variety of city departments, um, that are helping manage this incident. And I really should take this opportunity to really applaud their efforts because, you know, folks like us on the fire department, we've been using the Incident Command System and NIMS for, for many, many years. And, um, they have these folks from different areas of the city jump into the EOC, uh, embrace the training that they were given in 2017 and 2018 with respect to NIMS and Incident Command, and do such an outstanding job in this process is, is really applaudable. Um, but back to your point is that, that, that org chart will stay within the EOC, um, as part of that, uh, planning process, and it does change or can change from each operational period, so it's something that's not exactly static but can, can be kind of fluid.
Sure. I, I guess when I look at something like that, it, it demonstrates a very thoughtful plan, uh, that's in place, and I'll just leave it at that. You know, unfortunately, we have, uh, a very small number of residents who are being very critical at this time, and, um, it's a very good flow chart, and I wish it's just something that I would love to be able to share at an appropriate time based on some of the phone calls and emails that I receive.
I don't think it would help.
I agree. But I, fair enough.
I will mention that this presentation in its entirety is on the website, on the regular city council, what, uh, page where we have the agendas in the packet. Um, so as of right now, it's on there. I guess I will defer to the chief if we need to adjust that at some point down the road, but, uh, like he was saying, it, it changes day-to-day because we do give people days off. So when, when we, we've been training backups the past eight days so that when somebody is off, uh, we have somebody else ready to step in and take on the role while that person is off.
Sure.
So at this point, I hand it off to Ike Ogbo, our Health and Human Services Director, and Greg Olson, our Public Health Manager.
Hello, members of city council. My name's Greg Olson. I'm the Public Health Manager for the Health and Human Services Department, and for the, the city's response for COVID-19, I'm acting as the operations section chief. Um, as you saw in the organization chart, operations is broken down into two branches. We have our health branch and our human services branch, and within those branches, we have groups that have specific work assignments geared towards achieving our incident objectives. And most, uh, our primary work assignments include, um, conducting surveillance of the spread of COVID-19 in Evanston. Members of our health branch have been conducting thorough interviews with each Evanston resident who is a confirmed case. Um, we also conduct contact tracing and have been issuing orders of isolation and quarantine. Um, each confirmed case that is interviewed, uh, we establish a list of close contacts, and, uh, the CDC defines a close contact as an individual that is within six feet of a confirmed case for a prolonged period of time. Uh, we then reach out to those close contacts. Um, we get them established and set up in a state database called RedCap where it reaches out to them twice a day and it asks them, basically, how are you feeling? What kind of symptoms do you have? Uh, what's your temperature? And we've been monitoring, um, these individuals under quarantine and isolation twice a day for, and if they develop any symptoms, then I will take the necessary steps next, which would most likely be contacting their physician. Uh, we are also issuing educational guidance to vulnerable populations and organizations. For the past few weeks, we've been sending various guidance documents to, um, local businesses, churches, shelters, um, local organizations on the best practices that they can do to help prevent the spread of COVID. Um, most of these preventative tactics involve, um, non-pharmaceutical interventions, which is, uh, everyone's heard of them so, by, by now. It's social distancing, washing your hands, not touching your face, that sort of thing. And we've been keeping up with, um, the latest, um, the latest guidelines, um, and suggested improvements from the CDC and IDPH. Next slide, please. And we're also, uh, coordinating with our congregate living centers, uh, in order to share the latest public health information, and we want to confirm that they have infectious disease plans and mitigation measures in place should they, um, receive, should they, if and when they get a single case or a cluster of cases. Um, and a big thing we want to do is we want to understand and then relay this info to Unified Command of any concerns regarding their PPEs, which is their personal protective equipment. Um, also, staff shortages too. We want to make sure that these congregate living facilities, if they get a case, um, they know how to handle it. Uh, we want to make sure they have all the information at their fingertips, so if and when they do have a case, they're, they're ready for it, and we can help them out in any way we can. Um, on a daily basis, we are communicating, uh, with the Illinois Department of Public Health. They have been issuing guidance documents multiple times a day, um, regarding, uh, many different aspects of the response. And we are also currently managing our medical reserve corps. We've activated, I believe, 19 members so far that are helping us conduct our interviews of the close contacts, um, which, they've been a tremendous help because as our case numbers have ramped up over the last couple of days, uh, the need to do interviews and close contact interviews has also increased, so they've, they've helped tremendously in, in that regard. Next slide, please. And we've also been identifying and, uh, putting in place alternative housing for those who are unable to self-isolate, um, and this includes the homeless. And we, uh, we also have, um, procedures and services to effectively manage that. Uh, luckily, we haven't had an issue like that come up yet, um, but it's, it's a matter of time until someone who is a case or someone who's been exposed to a case can't effectively self-isolate at home. You know, maybe they live in a, in a one-bed, one-bath apartment with a family and, and they can't necessarily isolate from their family, so they would have to self-isolate somewhere else. So, like I said, luckily, we haven't had that yet, but it's, it's a matter of time before that happens, and we're, we're putting the plans in place so that if and when it does happen, we'll be able to, to help them out immediately. Uh, we're also identifying needs and establishing programs to assist the vulnerable groups with essential needs such as food. Um, that's one thing that we've heard over the last, last week or so is that Evanston residents are having trouble getting access to food or lack the money to get food. So one of our working groups is establishing a plan on how best to, to, to go ahead and meet those needs, um, working with, you know, internal partners and also our, our external local organizations. Uh, and then we're also developing and implementing a volunteer management program, uh, with assigned projects and also a, a mechanism for volunteers to sign up. Um, one of the good things, one, one thing that you can always count on whenever there's a debt, a disaster is, you know, helpers come from all corners. So we've been getting phone calls, and we've been getting emails from, uh, local organizations, individuals saying that they want to help and they want to volunteer. So we have a group putting together, uh, specific tasks that they can do, our volunteers can perform right now, and also we're foreseeing into the future possible, um, tasks that we envision that we would, we would need help with. Uh, next slide, please. And our, our PPEs, these are personal protective equipment. Um, we're constantly looking to procure more PPEs, uh, as I'm sure everyone's well aware there's a shortage of PPEs throughout the country. However, our, our city staff has done an amazing job, um, contacting pretty much every, every avenue that they can to procure, to get more additional PPEs. Um, and we also have guidelines in place on how to use PPEs, when they should be used, and, uh, our PPEs are currently monitored and distributed by the logistics team within the, the EOC. And also, if, you know, any residents, any organizations have PPEs, we are accepting donations. Um, I know we've, we've received a number of them so far, and we're always very, very thankful and considerate of that, so if, if there's any more donations out there, please, uh, let us know. And that's it for operations. Thank you.
All right. Good day. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good day. Hello, this is Ike, Health Department, and I'm gonna go over the next slide, and I believe that's logistics. All right. And I'm sorry about the camera. My camera's malfunctioning. So logistics, um, this group, what we are working on is ensuring that we obtain the necessary supplies, including PPEs. Greg actually mentioned PPEs and the lack of PPEs, not only locally, statewide, and also nationally. Uh, we continue to work with the county, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and people who are donating personally. And as Greg mentioned, if we know any organizations or any person who can donate PPEs, now is the time. In this group, we maintain secure inventory. We manage and track all donated supplies, and so, and we allocate supplies as directed by operations. So the group that Greg manages will inform the logistics team of what the needs are in regards to PPEs, then we will deliver. So far, we've delivered a number of PPEs to our long-term care facilities who are in dire need of PPEs. Establish and maintain lines with key suppliers. This is something that our logistics teams are working on in regards to all equipment needed, masks, and other supplies. To cure other resources such as facilities, such as facilities, laboratories needed for creating medical, um, emergency medical. Maintain emergency operations center and temporary facilities, and identify and maintain transportation for those who need safe isolation. So this is something that we are working on. We have indicated the need for transportation of those who do not have their own transportation to places of isolation. Uh, this is something that we are currently eyeing out, uh, on how this is going to be carried out going, going forward. Next slide. So what we've done with our volunteer group is we purpose, uh, our website where we have our volunteers. So the team of Evanston will be actually managing the volunteer group. So we, uh, assembled a number of city staff who will be managing the groups. Um, and what we want to do with these groups is to establish a number of tasks for the volunteers that are measurable and specific. Also, what we want to do is to communicate and assist our partner organizations in promoting their volunteer need because we also understand that they are in this situation with us, and we want to support them in every way which we can. All right. So this is part of the planning group. Um, and with this group, what we base our work on is to... is to conduct analysis by obtaining necessary data in order for us to project or forecast what the community spread will be, what the mortality rates will be, and whatever the future needs will be, so that we can plan ahead. I think this is very important information that we gather all this information and be able to stimulate or stipulate what is about to happen in the future. And that will guide how we plan going forward. In this group, we'll be interpreting data to identify current trends, like I mentioned, forecast, protection. And that will help align our resources so that we can have those resources available in the future when needed. And in this group, we produce what we call a situation report. This outlines the task, this outlines what we are planning on doing in a day-by-day activity. Next slide. All right. So this is the finance group. What we're trying to do here is to make sure that our finances are aligned so that we can respond to this emergency and respond to it in a very positive manner. Our track and monitor emergency-related expenses. So we do have systems in place where we are tracking our expenses. And not only that, we are tracking our overtime and resources that we've used in this task or in this response to this emergency. The understanding is that there are federal programs available where we can be reimbursed what we spent during this emergency. And we're also working in this group to ensure compliance with every federal or state reimbursement program. Next slide. So I think I'm going to hand this over to, is it Chief Scott? About an emergency operations center?
I can finish up on this one before I hand it off to Kimberly.
Okay.
An overview, we have both an in-person or a physical emergency operations center. And then we also have the virtual or remote emergency operations center. In this case, both are coming in very handy because we have instances where we don't want to have large groups congregating in one room. So it's been a challenge, but we've been working through it to not have too many people gathering at the physical emergency operations center. And we try to limit the number of people that are going in there just for everybody's safety. Try to make sure, we ensure that six-foot distance. But on a daily basis, whatever our operational period is, whether it's twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, we start the day off with the operations briefing. We go through everything that has been done the day before. And we report out on what we're going to start working on for the day. And then we go through the priorities, see if any have changed, see if anybody, any need to be reprioritized. We've done this several times since we started because as we make progress on the priorities, they either move up or down in the list of priorities, and then the tasks change accordingly. We'll continue with this setup for the foreseeable future, but trying to balance the in-person presence with the remote access and trying to do as much as we can, spread out and not in the physical EOC. We started out using our joint emergency operations center that we share with Northwestern, that they have at their facility at 1201 Davis. We used that for the first week. They were wonderful hosts. They have great setup, but it was a very small area for us to be in, and we could not achieve proper distancing. So we moved over to Robert Crown earlier this week. We've been operating the emergency operations center out of there since, and that has been working out fine. But starting on Monday, we're going to go all remote for our operations and test it out, make sure we can do it effectively because as this goes on, that may become the new reality. So we'll be ready to take that over if and when that becomes the case. Just touching on how this emergency response is going to take the entire community to pitch in and help and have a collective response. It is, you know, we try to break it down on a piece-by-piece level and take it inch by inch so that we can adapt and change and respond in a way that's cohesive and coordinated. But this is a very overwhelming event that is touching everybody, not just our city, our country, the nation, the world. And so that is a big thing to grapple with. So it is going to take all of our efforts, not just mine, not just city council, not just city government, but all of our partners who have been nominal, all of our residents who have been willing to pitch in and help at every step of the way. We're in the very beginning of this, and it's going to be a long road. And that, we'll need to help sustain that and have that be a consistent thing over the long haul. And I'm going to hand it over to Kimberly Richardson, who's going to talk about the mayor's task force.
Thank you, Erica. Good evening, City Council. This is Kimberly Richardson, interim Assistant City Manager. I just want to make sure you can all hear me clearly.
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So the mayor had convened a COVID-19 task force that comprised of members of our community, that's been the city, our education partners, business leaders, faith-based nonprofits, our healthcare, as well as our senior and congregate living communities. This group, which meets twice a week, provides, is an opportunity to provide information to share with the COVID working groups that they formed and community at large. We provide updates on COVID-19 in Evanston and the city's response and priorities. So a lot of times from these conversations that we have, there'll be information that comes from that. This is the group that we found out about the closing of interfaith actions, closing their shelters early. So this group was able to convey that to the EOC, for which the Unified Command then began the work of trying to resolve that issue, for which we now have, hopefully. So this group is a great, it's great to be able to identify issues in the community that sometimes we, as the city, may not be aware of just due to our proximity, and be able to respond quickly and effectively. And we also have the opportunity to share information from our legislators, who, from both the federal, state, and the county, join the call, as well as our hospital leaders and our educational leaders. So we have both superintendents participate. Both hospitals, St. Francis and North Shore, also participate on the calls, as well as Northwestern. Next slide, please. This is a task force. This is the org chart for our task force. Now, as you see, the names listed may change at times because like with the other org chart, we do add additional individuals. And we do now, under some of these groups, have subgroups that have been formed to support their work. And so, again, we have eight different groups that we have that makes up the task force. Next slide. So the business group, which meets twice a week, or, excuse me, meets weekly, have focused on communications. Now, with the stimulus package coming through, spa business administration discussing different types of loans, they're having those conversations with their business, with the business community, just to make sure how they're coping, if there are things that we can be doing. They bring to the city immediate needs that can be addressed, such as rent, taxes, or any other type of financial burdens that may be on them at this time. And then also talking about recovery, beginning plans to assist with deployment of federal resources once they are able, they're coming into the community. Making sure that as we do recover from this, that the businesses know what their needs are and can articulate that as one voice and advocate for themselves. Next slide. And then we also have the faith community. Now, this is a community that hasn't been discussed a lot, but have been a part of this conversation. As we all know, the faith community is going to be hardest hit by this because of the fact that the stay-at-home order has been issued. And so, the things that have been discussed is, you know, their lack of funding due to in-person services, which we don't think about at times, but then the conversation has been brought up. Well, how do we help those churches or houses of worship be able to utilize technology, online services, telecommunication, online giving? And so, what's great about having the task force is that we can then say, here's a need that one of our groups is having. And then I can go to another group that can say, how can we support that need? And so, it's a good opportunity for cross sectors working together to really make sure that we're, as a whole, are really supporting each other. And they're a great resource for volunteering recruitment. So as we are developing our volunteer plan and beginning to start managing that, the faith community has really stepped up to say, we want to be a part of that. And so, making sure they're communicating that and articulating it out throughout the community, what our needs are and what their needs are to make sure that we are providing that. And then again, just sharing best practices and trying to make sure that communication to the faith community. We have over seventy, some of houses of worship in Evanston. So we just want to make sure we're communicating to them. Next slide.
Kimberly, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I realize that your plan is developing, but is there a number or a point of contact for folks who are looking to share resources or volunteer? That's public at this point?
Yeah, so it is evolving, but our volunteer Evanston website is a great source. They are, we're beginning to populate volunteer opportunities on that site and projects. As to donations, I believe there is an email that I'll have to get for you that we can share with the public, that they can provide if they're interested in making some type of donation. But we're trying to make sure with our volunteer Evanston site, we're asking not just for volunteers correct today and tomorrow, but also looking down the road. And things that we're thinking about, those who are bilingual, is going to be a need for us. And so, those who may have technical skills, but also those individuals who may be interested in serving in the soup kitchen or helping pack food. So there's all different skill sets and levels of need that we're looking for. And if you go to volunteerevanston.org, you'll begin to see those needs populated. And it's being updated daily. And so, please be patient with us as we're getting those needs in. We're updating the website immediately.
Okay. At the appropriate time, if you would send out that link to members of council, I'm sure we'd all appreciate it. Again, at the appropriate time when you're ready.
No, thank you, sir.
Not before. Thank you.
And then again, our educational leaders. So our, both of our superintendents have been part of the conversation. One thing that was discussed, it was meals for students and making sure that we had the, a number of meals available. As you all know, of course, that those numbers keep increasing. And so, we continue to work with the school districts to provide those additional meals as this prolongs. People are being home and, you know, again, I think the mayor mentioned food insecurity. So making sure our students have that access. So we're working with them, and they're updating us weekly. Also, informing us about their e-learning. Both districts have been able to provide over hundreds of laptops and Wi-Fi hotspots for e-learning. So if there are people in the community that are not able to access a laptop or Wi-Fi hotspot, they should reach out to the school district, the respective school district, as they do have those available. Next slide, please. And then finally, our nonprofit working group. They're really working closely with the legislators to learn more about available funding for displaced population. They're also looking at early childhood care providers and making sure we're addressing their needs for those individuals who are essential employer, employees and need to find immediate care for their children. And then also, a survey has gone out to residents from this group to better understand additional needs within the community. That will help us be more responsive. And again, this information will be shared with our Unified Command if it requires city action to help mitigate some of these issues. But for the most part, it's been great seeing our different groups working together. And as for the faith-based community, having that need for additional infrastructure, being able to work with the nonprofit working group to help identify how to build that infrastructure is a way that we're seeing this task force working together. Next slide. And then we have our elected officials. We are very fortunate to have our elected officials involved and engaged. And this is just not at the local level. We have our, of course, our aldermen, who are always engaged in making sure this conversation, we're making sure we are updating the community and our communications is consistent. But we also have our, not only our county, but our, both our state reps, as well as our senator, state senator, part of our conversations. They're able to give us information about what's happening at the federal, state, and county levels in real time, able to work with us with Illinois Emergency Management Agency, as well as the Illinois Department of Public Health. There, I can say that it has been a great resource. When we are trying to figure out who to contact, we can pick up the phone, and one of our elected officials are able to answer and be able to connect us to the right state agency or the right individual to help with pushing some of that PPE to us or any other information that we're trying to be able to ascertain. And also, it's great because they are sharing this information with the task force. So that information is hopefully getting out to the community and not just staying within the city structure. Next slide, please. And finally, is our hospitals. They are really the, been very responsive to the city and making sure that we are aware of what's happening within their infrastructure and what their needs are. Staff is working closely with both hospitals to understand, again, their surge capacity and to prepare for that if that day eventually comes. St. Francis last week did a blood drive at this DB center, and blood donations continue to be needed. So if those are individuals who are healthy and want, and willing to donate, please do. Both hospitals are accepting donations. For now, hospitals are able to meet current demands on the system, but we are monitoring that day-to-day within our EOC and preparing and being ready to collaborate and explore opportunities where they need to have overflow hospital space. And if there's any question, oh, finally, we have long-term care in congregate living facilities. Now, this group really has worked closely with our health department, with Audrey Thompson leading that conversation. We have been able to work with them and provide them education, outreach, planning, just making sure we understand what their needs are, but also, as healthcare providers, making sure they have proper PPE, staffing levels, if they're in need of some additional support, what does that look like to prevent having any type of outbreak or cluster happening within their facilities? So we work very closely with them. And again, sharing whatever information they have with the entire task force is helpful as some of times it can be information that another group can be able to assist them with as well. With that, I believe...
I have a, this is Alderman, let me, I have a quick question about that.
Sure.
So can we, can you just loop the team and whoever's working on this one to make sure that we have the Rice Children's Center on the list? I know they're part of the district, and they also, I'm sure, have contacts with other state agencies based on the population that they have there. But I just want to make sure that we have them on our list of a congregate living facility that might need some support if they are to encounter outbreak.
Yes, and we can talk offline if you want to give me more information.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions I can answer?
Kimberly, it's Tom Suffolk. Is there a reason why we can't post the call summaries on the COVID-19 website? That's something that we can do. I think that would help people know what this group is working on, and they could contribute if they'd like to.
I mean, I would, I mean, if the information isn't sensitive, I'll defer to Erica or the mayor to that question, but, I mean...
Yeah, I think it's useful information, and I think that we can figure out a way to post it on the website so that everybody can see and understand the work that's being done. So I think it's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, that's kind of like one of the overarching concerns that I hear from people is just the lack of information. And I think this would probably help with that. Just some more things that we could post up there as well. But if we could post the call summaries, I think that would be great. Thanks.
I'll make sure that gets posted tomorrow. And if there's any other information you think we should go ahead... And if there's any other information you think we should go ahead and share as well, please make sure, please let me know as I will make sure it gets posted.
Thanks, Kimberly.
Are there any other questions regarding the task force? Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to Erica.
All right. Before I go into the economic impact, I'm just going to opine a little bit more on the communications. It was just brought up. So our communications team is just overwhelmed with the amount of information that they're trying to get out to the public and they're trying to get that information out in all the various ways that people like to be communicated with, whether it's Facebook or press releases or Facebook Lives or on air production. So I think they're doing a phenomenal job trying to assemble all the information that's coming into them and put it into something cohesive that the community can understand. Although I understand that when we're in a situation like this, there's, there's no amount of information that's going to be enough and that we're always trying to strive to share more faster, quicker, better, and in a clear and concise and consistent way so that messaging is understood and that people are getting the information that they need. There's so much information coming out about this, not only every day, but every minute, every hour. And we're, we're trying to bring it in and narrow it down and, and put as much as we can on the website and all of our other tools. And we've dedicated additional resources to the communications team from other departments in the city so that they can have assistance compiling all this information and putting it out there. There's a lot of good information available and it's coming from various different sources. So we're doing our best to consolidate it all and put it on the website and we'll keep doing that. We did make some changes to the website last week that I think made it a little bit clear, but certainly that will continue to grow and evolve over time. I'm just going to speak briefly about the economic impact of this. I think that we all know that this is going to be a sustained, long-term issue and we're really in a period of very much of unknown right now. And we are tracking our expenses. Right now, we're at about $140,000. FEMA does have some reimbursements for our costs. That could range between 75% potentially up to 90%. So we're tracking all of our expenses very closely so that we can apply for these reimbursements. As far as the impacts on the city budget, we're going to have our staff compile as much information as they can for the April 13 city council meeting so that we can begin to discuss how this will impact our city budget for the year. I mean, it's obviously very early to talk about this because we're still in what I call the very beginnings of this pandemic. But certainly there are going to be very big impacts on the city budget and it's not too early for us to start assessing what those might be and start planning for how we can plan to give ourselves some options to solve them. A lot of, there's a lot of misconception that most of our budget is funded by property taxes. That is not the case. We rely heavily on income tax, sales tax, athletic tax, amusement tax, all of the various different taxes for us to actually operate the entire city. And those, those revenues will be severely impacted. There will not be as much liquor tax this time as there was last year, or athletic tax, or potentially some of the other taxes. So we will see some impacts on our revenue, which we'll have to make some difficult choices about going forward. And we're also going to have to make some decisions about our capital improvement program. And we'll bring it, bring that as well on April 13 discussion to talk about what projects we might potentially defer or weigh down, partially because there is a slowdown in people being able to work on these projects in terms of contractors and construction trades, but also because we may want to save some of our capital and put it to other uses. We'll have that conversation next month. Obviously, this is going to be very crushing to not only our small businesses, but everybody that lives and works here. And there, the federal government is in the process of passing this stimulus package and hopefully the president will sign it soon if he hasn't already. That will be, I think, a big help for our vulnerable residents to be able to bridge the gap, to get them through until this, we see the light at the end of this tunnel. But there will be a very big challenge to the safety net that exists in this community and our, our own city budget. So we're not expecting to see a lot of money from that federal stimulus package. They did carve out some money in it for cities with a population of over $500,000. So we will not see any direct funding in terms of that stimulus package, but we still have other options under the federal disaster declaration and our local disaster declaration that will allow us to recoup some of our funds in terms of what we've spent, but we won't get anything at this point in time that we know of to offset our loss in revenue. So with that, I'm just going to wrap up with this last slide that, as I talked about earlier, we really are in the beginnings of this. And I think everybody is doing their best to make sure that we mitigate the duration and the spread of this. But the best thing you can do is if you saw the Mayor Lightfoot's presentation today, stay home and save lives. That's really what it's all about now. So we're going to continue to push that message to everybody in the community that it's our responsibility to slow the spread and staying home is what it takes. So with that, I will open it up to questions.
Yeah, if you want to ask a question, just hold up your hand if I can see your picture and we'll go ahead. I will start with Alderman and Ramey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Erica, I'm wondering what communication we have with the city of Chicago. We received the emergency alert from Chicago this afternoon from Mayor Lightfoot closing the parks in Chicago. I'm wondering if we got an advance notice of that and how it might affect people coming in from Chicago to use Evanston parks?
Yeah, I think what, we didn't get a direct notice that that was going to happen today, but I believe she did a pretty good job of previewing it yesterday. There was a pretty stern warning that, you know, she would not hesitate to do that if it became necessary. And I think it was pretty clear with the nice weather that occurred yesterday that it was absolutely necessary. And so that came today. We have not yet closed our lakefront, but we've been monitoring it. I believe that with the cooler weather and the rain that is forecast for the next few days, we potentially could buy ourselves a few days before having to do that. But also I think that we have a lot of people out there who are sharing the information with people who are enjoying parks and the lakefront and making sure that if they see groups congregating, that they let them know. Best thing that people can do is just share that and ask people to disperse. And if they, they don't, then call 311 or call 911 and we'll have an officer come by and try to, try to help enforce that.
Okay.
Other questions? Comments?
I do.
All right, Alderman, Ramey, and then we'll go to Alderman.
I want to make a comment about Albany Care. There's really radical non-compliance in front of Albany Care across the street from Albany Care and the park. Very close contact, lot of smokers at Albany Care. And there's just absolutely no distance between or among the residents there in the park across the street. I think we really need to intervene there and have a conversation with the administration of Albany Care. I know it's going to be difficult, but I think it has to be done because Albany Care people do visit, you know, other locations in the city. They do not just stay among themselves. And furthermore, one of the biggest concerns I've read about are clusters and that, that's just a potential disaster there. Second of all, I was going to speak about Mayor Lightfoot. I think she only closed the parks all along the lakefront. I mean, those are totally off limits and the lakefront. So that, and she did it because of radical non-compliance by grownups in City of Chicago after being pled with by the governor on down. Second of all, Erica, that packet you sent out the other day with the three folders, I thought that was an amazing piece of work and it took me hours to get through. And, you know, I, part of the presentation tonight cleared up some of the stuff, but our staff is doing just an amazing job. And I, you know, I just really compliment all of you. I don't know how the city keeps running on the one hand and doing all this work on the other hand. So thank you very much. It certainly helps me understand how emergency management, et cetera, works. Tom and Cecily, really thank you for this extraordinary information you're sending from the state and the county. I wouldn't know about those things otherwise. So I do appreciate that. So I just wanted to say those things. Everybody's doing a great job and people around my neighborhood seem to be behaving very nicely. There's nobody around. Parking, people are complaining about street cleaning. I am begging people to put up with it. If there's, if nothing else, let's have clean streets the best we can. I just think it makes everything look so good, especially when things start getting green, if our streets are clean for the next two months. Thank you, Ed Bircano, for keeping your people working and thank you for those who are out there doing the work.
Thank you, Alderman.
And you're doing a great job, Mayor. I forgot to mention you. And all of us, yeah.
Erica, can you just, I know many people have written Alderman and they've written me about the street cleaning. And in addition to, you know, it looking nice, there's a real infrastructure reason that the city needs to do that. Could you just articulate that so for people at home that are watching, they can better understand it and know a bit about Alderman?
Sure. The sewer system knows no pandemic. It needs to be cleaned and operating in a, in a good manner, especially since we're all home now. So we do need to continue to clean the streets. It's very important that that debris and material gets picked up and disposed of properly and doesn't end up in the sewer system for all of our sakes. So yes, we are not ticketing for street cleaning. We are just issuing warnings and to the best of everybody's ability that can get some compliance so that we can continue to clean the streets. It is important, but we totally understand that people are home and they are not able to often find a spot. So that is the situation for now.
Thank you. Alderman, Ramey?
Yeah, a couple of things. We're going to do a call of the wards, right? Because I have a couple of.
We are.
Okay. So a couple of things. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you to all the staff who are not on this meeting, who have done so much work and had to transition quickly from, you know, their regular assignments over to a new place and virtual and all those kinds of things. And thank you that they're still coming to work because I'm sure they also have their own concerns about their own safety. But my, I guess my comment is, and the reason that I joined Alderman Suffolk and Alderman Bruce Simmons to call this meeting is while all that work was going on in the last, you know, week or so, and I know it's very important that we have a lot of things in play, particularly for FEMA compliance, I just want to make sure that we're still communicating with the aldermen and we're still communicating with the citizens. And I know Erica just spoke about that in terms of communications to the citizens. And I know everyone doesn't read everything, no matter how many things we send out. But part of what I'm hearing from citizens and part of what I would just say for myself is when there's not information, then it causes more panic. And so already people had their own panic based on their own life situation and what they were hearing on the news regarding COVID-19. And then to kind of not hear what the city is doing and working on, I think caused more frustration. And I can tell you, going from, as we just spoke about before, a city council where we met and we were able to talk things out and make decisions together and kind of come to an understanding, to going to this emergency management where kind of things went a little bit silent and, you know, I kind of felt like I was getting things just a couple minutes before the general public was hard. Because it was hard for me to, you know, talk to my constituents, be very honest about what was going on, what people can expect in the long run, because I didn't know myself. And so I think that was part of the reason that I wanted to have this meeting. So I'm glad we did. I'm glad you were able to get that. But just, I want us to really be mindful of that because if we didn't call this special meeting, I'm not sure when that information would have gotten out and when I would have been able to, you know, really give my constituents or call them with a lot of questions, some hope in that we are making a plan, a plan will come out next week, or we are working on these things without really fully understanding that myself. So again, hopefully we never have another disaster. But if we do, or even if we don't, I think we really just have to be careful to make sure that the people elected by the constituents have the information we need so that we can serve them appropriately to their expectations, particularly when they have a lot of concerns. So I don't want us to forget that as we're working under this ELC, that we still have a council of nine people and that we should all be getting information as quickly as possible and being involved as much as possible so we can relay that to people and try to keep people at ease.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman, Bruce Simmons? And then I'll go to you, Alderman.
I'd like to ask, I mean, the information is like information overload right now. And I've been trying to do as good as I can about getting information to the residents. And I don't know if all of my colleagues would like it, but I'm requesting that when the city puts out an official update, it could go out to my newsletter listserv because I don't think that everyone on my listserv is signed up for the city emails. Or is that, are they automatically signed up for the city emails if they're signed up for our ward?
Good point. Very good point.
Is that a question?
There's a siren going by, so I'm just going to wait a second.
Okay.
So what we've been doing since this started is any communication regarding the pandemic has been sent to all subscribers of all lists that the city has. So even if you've only signed up for a street sweep, then you're still getting newsletter regarding any information about the pandemic. Even if it wasn't specifically, you know, a newsletter with, you know, fifth ward, seventh ward, whatever, it's still going to all of your seventh ward, fifth ward subscribers, et cetera.
Okay. That's, that's helpful. I wouldn't have known that because I'm signed up for various newsletters. So I just thought I was getting it as a city subscriber. So thank you.
That's excellent. Thank you very much.
Alderman, Ramey?
I might be the only one that doesn't know this, but today Penny Pritzker was on with the governor, the governor's press conference, daily press conference. And she announced that the city, that the feds had issued a declaration regarding emergency but, I missed what, what the feds had declared regarding the state of Illinois and all the municipalities in it. Was there some award given to everybody? I figured you would know it if nobody else did.
Well, the only, the only thing that.
It had to do with FEMA benefits coming down.
Well, in terms, in terms of this information, again, everything is moving so, so rapidly for, for everybody. I haven't, I didn't see that, but I know that the governor's office put the request in for a major disaster declaration. So the president has declared New York State, California, major disaster declaration. If that occurs.
I think.
A bunch, a bunch of switches can go on, individual assistance and some other assistance. I'm just guessing perhaps if there was a FEMA declaration today, that's what it may have been. But again, will the city will get that information out, I guess, once it confirms that. But that actually opens up.
I think maybe that was confirmed today because people were just applauding her for what she said, but I, I missed it. I was involved in something. Could you find out and let us know what that means?
I can find out. I might even be able to find it out right now in this meeting. Alderman, Simmons?
Is what Ramey referring to is the federal government taking over all the tier one PPE supplies? And that the president involved the.
Talking about a declaration. So what you're talking about is something different.
Okay.
Important news, too.
It was about, it was about, it was after four o'clock, around 3:30, four o'clock.
Okay.
Let us know what it was.
Alderman, Bruce Simmons?
Thank you. As the, the stimulus is likely to get approved, I guess, tomorrow and there's no direct support for cities less than 500,000, is that where it landed?
I, I have to find out. I was on the phone with our Congresswoman in the Senator's Office several times yesterday about this because it's very upsetting news that the local government stabilization portion, which was, and it's unclear to me if it was 180 million, 180 billion or 150 billion, is capped at communities over 500,000. Which means the vast majority of communities in this country without any kind of aid to help us with the significant revenue loss that will all going to occur. But this, this bill's massive, right?
Right.
Almost 2,000 pages. So there's a lot of work that's going to be done going through this to understand. I'm going to continue to push really hard that there needs to be something here to help these local governments with their, with their revenue loss.
Thank you. Right. So, so with that said, I mean, I, I'm hoping that you do and that we all do. In the meantime, when it does pass, can you have city manager, can you have each department or at least a one cheater to. to translate what this means real time for residents in terms of if they qualify for a stimulus check and other benefits, even though we're unlikely to get a municipal direct benefit?
Yes, absolutely. Once it has been approved and passed, we will get that information out to community members.
I would just caution, and this, again, this bill is so big. All the associations that were a part of as a city has been so valuable during this, during this crisis. National League of Cities, US Conference of Mayors, all that. Those, Illinois Municipal League, those associations are going to go through this quickly and produce summary information in all, all of that. Just caution, you know, tasking all of our city staff or a bunch of them to go through a 2,000-page bill to figure that out. Like there are experts in the associations. They'll do that. Then we will figure it out. That's what I, that would be my suggestion.
If it's done in time, and I mean, I think that we should have our own language and perspective. We're a unique city. I don't know that we should necessarily use a template. Maybe a template will be fine. I'm just asking that the residents are clear on what their individual household benefit will be, what opportunities are available for organizations in town and services, especially if we're hearing that municipalities less than 500,000 aren't going to get any benefit. So we can clear that up, that we will have some benefit.
Well, there will be a lot of benefits. I went through a lot of the bill today myself. And there, this is where the task force members will also help us, is that they will get the information specific to the small businesses and specific to the different faith, faith community, things like that, and start to get that information out once we start getting it from those associations and things like that. So will be lots more to come. And this stimulus bill may not be the only one. There may be additional bills coming down the road in the months to come. So we're hopeful that this will help immediately and that there may be something else coming down the road that will help with the other things that haven't been touched.
Thank you, Erica. And in an update, yes, Alderman Rainey, the president did declare Illinois a major disaster today. So we'll have to look more into that and exactly see what, what he turned on here in Illinois with that major disaster declaration. I know the governor was asking for individual assistance, which is assistance for individuals and families. So we will look into that, get that, the city staff can get that information out. That's.
That's good news.
Wonderful news for us.
Good news and bad news, that we're a major disaster, but.
Any, any other comments before we get to Call of the Ward?
I just have one quick question.
Alderman?
You're calling me? Okay. I guess the follow-up on the comment that Alderman Bruce Simmons made in terms of benefits. So I know that we've, our general assistance team and emergency assistance from human services is starting to get lots of applications. And I know their budget, I asked Jared today, their budget is around $30,000. So assuming we already know there's lots of people who are out of work right away from this disaster and particularly our lower income workers who, you know, may not go back for some time. If we can just look, Erica, when you're looking at the 13th, if we can look at that line item for the budget to see, you know, if there's any way we can support them more or maybe working with federal or state agencies to see if there's any rental assistance. I know we all got those emails about rental freeze. I did speak to our state reps and they're trying to kind of maybe work through something on the state level. But I would just implore us all to, if we can, make a plea to landlords in our area that they also, I know they have mortgages to pay, but there is more mortgage assistance and more mortgage, I won't say leniency, but, you know, Freddie Mae, or was it Freddie Mac? And whatever the two mortgage people are, have said that they're also going to, you know, be doing some things for mortgage holders, but those things obviously don't translate to renters. So I just want to encourage all of our landlords who can take a little bit of a hit to just work with their renters because we don't want to cause more homelessness, obviously, here in the city when we already are working on trying to get affordable housing. And we just have to understand that all of our neighbors, particularly our renters, are probably going to be hard to sit here. But we can all be kind of singing that same tune to ask people if they can just be lenient and work with people who are renting from them during this time. And hopefully we will get some federal and state money to help out there as well.
Great suggestion. All right, let's, let's go on and we'll move to the Call of the Ward now. Start with Alderman Rainey. Oh, excuse me, Alderman Fleming.
I think I made my referral earlier about the emergency declaration. Oh, and I just want to make a public plea to the governor, that he look at increasing the homeless prevention funds because those are funds that we use here, connections, to help with those rental assistance. So I know that they're starting to talk about that. So hopefully the governor can go ahead and increase those funds.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk? We can't hear you, Judy. We can't hear you. I think you got on mute.
I think we were supposed to go to public comment next. Before Call of the Ward.
Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry about that. You're right. So we did, we put public comment at the end. We wanted people to be able to hear the, hear the conversation, if they came in with anything as well. So we're going to turn it to Clerk Reed, who's been collecting the public comment.
Yes. All right. Can, am I able, yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, so Brenda, this is all available. The mayor, you should also have access to this list here. Brenda Bugrand said, what preparations are being done by Evanston, by the Evanston Health Department to support Evanston Hospital and Evanston residents to ensure PPE is available? What plans are being made for housing overflow hospital patients?
We discussed that.
Well, these are, these are just questions that.
Oh, okay. So she probably heard.
She got her question answered during the. Okay, people, I will summarize this one. So this, this person is asking, is pleading with us to, I think, of folks in the medical field and first responders and distribution workers, scientists, and the thousands of volunteers, et cetera, who are working hours and risking their lives for the public good, stay home and save lives. This person is pleading with folks to stay home. That is the summary there. This is Jean. And Jean says, the number of cases in Illinois is increasing as are cases in Evanston. I would like to support the decision that the stay-at-home order continue longer than April 7th to continue to support medical workers and provide room for hospitals to deal with these serious cases. This is from Kathleen Flaherty. I hope that the, I hope the city will put a temporary halt to construction activity that is both, A, highly polluting, like roof replacement, parking lot resurfacing, and non-essential, like example, no active leaks. People are confined to their homes and cannot escape toxic fumes. COVID-19 hits the lungs especially hard and is especially deadly for older persons and persons with respiratory, immune and cardiovascular disease. The groups are hit most hard by air pollution from certain construction activities. I suggest an initial ban extend through the end of April at least. So that is Kathleen. Joy Downey. I appreciate Evanston's commitment to help all of us working from home by ceasing to write tickets for street cleaning violations due to COVID. However, I and a number of neighbors received warning tickets. What is the point of this and why are we paying someone to check parking other than for safety violations like fire hydrants, driveways, et cetera? This is yet another piece of paper I have to disinfect and pointless use of city time and money. If the parking office is bored, have them help other COVID efforts in Evanston. And to summarize a few more of these. Someone has left a link for us. And that will be shared with the Alderman. That is Rita Katz. Someone, this is Kathleen, is wants, Kathleen is saying that you is wondering if, if yellow tape is enough to keep folks out of Penny Park. That is Kathleen's statement. And, and that is the, that is the end of public comment.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. Before we, before we do the round of Call of the Ward, there were a couple of things that I had seen when we went through the, when the city staff went through the presentation. I just want to make sure everybody understands the way that the sections are in that ICS, the incident command structure. There are four different section chiefs. So today we had Greg Olson and Ike O'Boe cover all four, but there are separate people. So I just wanted people to know that. Somebody had asked about, in the public, about whether there are backups. And I know that the city's staff and city manager's office has created backups for each of those positions because there is a big fear in this organization, just like any, that any of us are susceptible to getting COVID-19. And if that were to happen, is there a backup? And there are people in those backup positions and they are rotating them through so they know the position. Someone had asked about donations. The Evanston Community Foundation has set up the COVID-19 Rapid Response Fund. It's similar to the Chicago Community Trust Fund that they've set up. It's to meet unmet needs that aren't being met through different programs or federal or state programs. So that is, that is a place. And then the community foundation is making, making an evaluation of where to place that money in the community. You know, there's several hundred thousand already. Somebody asked about the volunteers. So while they're still building it out and building out the projects, if you go to cityofevanston.org or with slash COVID volunteer, there is COVID volunteer, is it tier or tiers? There, Erica's here. I just want to make sure I didn't miss that, Erica. But it's COVID volunteer and you can sign up for volunteer projects and there'll be a bunch of those placed there. Somebody had asked about rice as a surrogate shelter. Rice is on the list and has been on these meetings there because that was highlighted earlier as well. Same with all, same with all, I'm sure the city manager's office will, will follow up there. So I just wanted to check those off. But let's go ahead now and return to Call of the Ward. Alderman Rainey. So let's go with Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me? Okay. So like everyone else, I want to thank our staff for doing a federais job. And Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we're lucky to have you. And to all the residents out there who have sent questions, the only suggestion that I would have is that we have very clearly delineated on our website, all of the information. It's so helpful to have, have one page that's the source for people to, to go to. And thank you to everyone who is volunteering. I've got an incredible number of people who, who simply want to help. And I think that speaks well for our community. But the reminder is always there, everybody stay in and be safe.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'll join everyone else in saying thank you very much to you for your leadership, our staff, for all the hard work and effort to bring information in a situation that is constantly changing. And I also want to encourage people to, to stay at home. I'm getting a lot of phone calls from folks wanting to volunteer. And the first thing that I tell them is take care of yourself and your family first, right? And then, then our staff is doing an excellent job working with our community partners. So thank you. Thank you all. It's a cute picture, Tom.
We're going to get to Alderman Suffering shortly. Maybe his kid will make a special appearance. Let's see. Alderman Lee?
Yes, I also want to echo what everyone else has said, that I think our staff and the mayor are doing an absolutely phenomenal job. And I want to thank my colleagues for all of the information that they're sharing with, with all of us together. It just points out to all of us that there is so much information coming at us that we actually really need all of us to be working at it simultaneously. And as Alderman Fisk said, the volunteers and the requests for how to volunteer that I've been getting and what to do and how can they help, just pouring in, I'm pointing people to the relief fund and to the connections for the homeless. And I think if, once we are able, and I'm telling people that we're moving as fast as we can, that this is, coronavirus is moving almost faster than we can. And that's to be patient for now, and there will be many opportunities coming up. But once again, I want to thank Erica, Kimberly, Luke, all of the staff. I don't know how you all are still standing at this point. So, so, and thank you also, Mayor. I've heard from many people around the country saying, wow, you all have the right mayor for this, this right now. So I do want us to also thank all my colleagues. So everyone, stay safe, stay home.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
Really, just to echo all those sentiments, again, the staff has been amazing. My colleagues have been amazing as well. A lot of things are going on in the background, but really the key thing is everybody keeps saying it over and over again, but we have to keep saying it because, you know, I keep getting text pictures or phone calls here and there, is we have to follow the rules and instructions. And the longer people aren't, the longer we're going to be dragging this out. So it's just so, so critical to, to abide by all of that. So thank you to all of you. Appreciate all of your efforts and I appreciate you. And we're going to get through this.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Bruce Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adding my thanks to everyone, each one of you, my colleagues on City Council, our amazing city staff, the dedicated organizations in town and their leadership and the residents of Evanston. Thank you to the residents of Evanston. You've made such a big difference in your volunteerism, donating. The way you've rallied and advocated made us aware of opportunities for us to lead. Thank you to the community of Evanston. Stay safe.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Suffering?
Just want to send good wishes to everyone at Dream Crowns in particular. And I echo what everyone said. I really hope that we do a good job of filling that, that website with as much information as possible. Anything we can do to just provide one place for everyone to find out everything would be really helpful and a long way to prevent rumors and panic. Thank you, everyone, for your work. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Revelle?
I would just like to say thank you very much for this really terrific presentation this evening to really help all of us on the council as well as our citizens who were able to watch tonight to really appreciate the amazing organization that's behind all the work that's going on. And I've been really impressed listening to those community task force conference calls to hear from all the different segments of our community, the nonprofits, the hospitals, et cetera, all the groups that are working so hard behind the scenes to meet the needs of the community. And a huge, huge thank you to our wonderful staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman?
Yes, I've been on those calls with Alderman Revelle and it has been amazing to just listen to all the input that they have and all the work that they're doing. I forgot when I was talking earlier during the meeting about all the great work everybody was doing to thank Alderman Simmons for the amazing contribution she made. She bought a house and she's donated, for the time being, to house the homeless. And I, I just, I just couldn't believe it when I heard it. And so thank you, Alderman Simmons. That was a wonderful thing you've done.
Well, I was able to.
Unbelievable. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to mention that.
No, thank you, thank you. Erica Storley, I don't want to leave people hanging. I just want to make sure I got the website right or the webpage right about the volunteer. It was on your, it was on your presentation.
Let me take a quick look.
Maybe that, that literally just came out today, so we will get a press.
Volunteer Evanston.org. How easy could it be?
Evanston.org. Perfect. Thank you, Kimberly Richardson. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
All in favor of it?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in.
Everyone.
Stay well.
Stay well. Stay healthy.
Night.